All right, welcome. I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Brzaska.
We're all here and we do have a quorum. The first item tonight is public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any topic. If you are the applicant, and later in the meeting, you don't have to speak now, is there any member of the public that wants to address the board? If you are not the applicant for, let's say, Wayside as resident, and you would like to make public comment, I think now would be a good time to do that. Oh, yeah, look at that. That's why everybody's just looking at me. Yes. Welcome.
I'm back.
Your two minutes begins right now. Thank you.
All right. As per my last speech at the zoning meeting, there was currently no approval for clubs, lodges, halls with R1 zoning. If we make this an exception, what else could we be setting ourselves up for? This could be setting a dangerous precedent. What if some radical religious group claims First Amendment rights? Wouldn't you have to oblige them then? If the church is hurting from money, they should sell the land to build single-family resident homes, because that's what R1 should be. Also, previously, they kept bragging about how well-behaved their kids are, since we didn't notice that they'd been with St. Olaf for 13 years. But how are we supposed to know that those kids belong to Wayside? When I saw yelling, screaming kids run around, I thought it was part of their daycare program. You look on their website, they didn't mention the Wayside program as far as kids go, and they still advertise their daycare. Also, please recall Edgar Barron's hard work. He petitioned with all the signatures of people opposing this project. And then, I've been really busy with research, spent hours going through all kinds of old articles. And I can tell you that Wayside has not been good neighbors when it comes to the city of Aurora. Seems like they have little regard for the concerns of the community, they seem to be unapologetic, and they're masters of playing victim in an attempt to garner sympathy votes from the media. So as you may recall, I mentioned that they previously housed Thomas Kokorilis, the Ripper Crew guy, and he showed up March 31st, 2019, and that's when everything started going haywire in the press. The city of Aurora felt blindsided. The mayor's office, they received upwards of 100,000 complaints about Wayside's decision to take in Thomas. Thomas kept saying, "I want to go on with my life and be left alone." Well, his victims, they can't say the same thing, because they're six feet under. Protesters were wondering, how can they say that he's actually rehabilitated? That's an excellent question. Wayside Cross, the board members decided unanimously to continue housing this monster. This one here, Wayside Cross, convinced it can work with Aurora despite tension overtaking in the Ripper Crew member, Mr. Lukos, their president, said that they have no intention of fighting with the city. So then, come June 7th, I'm sorry, June 27th, 2019, they found out that they were going to be getting rid of the sex offenders, because they were housing too many of them. The city of Aurora, they did some new rezoning, they got some new software, they found out Wayside Cross was too close to a playground. And they told Wayside Cross this in February of that year, so before the Ripper guy arrived, okay? And then, they tried to play the victim. So they tried saying that they didn't have any notice, and then they also lawyered up. They sued the city. They were told in February not to accept any more child sex offenders for the moment. However, Deb Ling, the Aurora Assistant Corporation Council, said additional sex offenders were taken in. And then the communication between the city and Wayside fell apart. July 2nd, that's when the civil rights attorneys went after the city. So they filed a federal lawsuit against the city of Aurora, trying to argue that the men should not have to move. And then the next couple of articles are more about restraining orders and how they're trying to keep them in place. In the meantime, August 2019, here's a picture of Thomas hanging out at Starbucks with Wayside Cross people. In October of that year, the Aurora attorneys argued the case should be ruled in state court first. Then in November of that year, it sounded like they weren't going to get approval for a loan for their urban youth center, I'm sorry, for their urban youth program. They requested $20,000. The previous two years, they requested $2,000, I'm sorry, $1,000, $12,500. This one was for 20, so it was initially denied. So Robin Sterke, or Sturkle, she went to the media and complained that they weren't going to get this, played the victim card. Here's November again. You've got Thomas hanging out at Red Lobster with James Lukos. In December of that year, the city tried to get rid of the child sex offenders again. Told them, "You've got 30 days." That was over 20% of their residents were child sex offenders. And then one of them happened to be a former youth baseball coach who was convicted of 20 counts of child porn, and he also failed to register as a sex offender. Who's to say that they think he's rehabilitated? What if he's going to be part of this kid's program? I mean, he's a baseball coach formerly. And then, come in December that year, there was a second lawsuit that was filed against them. Meaning the residents were trying to sue the city of Aurora. In January 2020, they were still trying to stay there, but beyond that, January 15th timeline. This one talks about Marcus Sabo, who was the baseball coach. He's also a resident and an employee of Wayside. So finally, January 31st, 2020, the judge rules that the Wayside Cross sex offenders can move. But they hung around. So March 27th, they still had some remaining. Some of them hung around till, I think there was like one or maybe two that hung around to finally May 15th, and they were finally all out of there. So it took almost a year of going back and forth, back and forth, trying to get that resolved. This one was an article on the ANETV True Crime. James Lukos was talking about Thomas Kokorilis. He said, "He's a free man. He can go anytime he wants. There's no limitations imposed on him." That's kind of scary, knowing that he could be running around. Then this one, I really like this one. This was April 2022. The headline says, "Still Not Open As April Begins. Closure Of McCarty Park In Aurora For Winter Season Does Not Add Up." So basically, what happened was, the park that was in question was temporarily closed. They had to remove some trees, the turf was damaged, and they had to wait till the weather could get better so they could fix it. It was a safety and liability issue, so the park was closed in the meantime. Meanwhile, Robin Sturkle ran to the press, made a big deal about the park being closed, in an attempt to put the city of Aurora on blast for evicting those child sex offenders.
How many more news articles do you have to read us?
I'll wrap it up with one more.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Because you know that it is two minutes, right?
I know. I apologize. Again, I spent hours working on this.
Yep.
So, this one here. 1998 CF, as in criminal felony, 125, "The People Of The State Of Illinois Versus John Bedell." You see, John Bedell, he was the Wayside Youth Director for about eight years, maybe nine, I think. Anywho, he was found guilty of sexually abusing a 16-year-old in their program. 16-year-old in the program who had been under his supervision for years. He resigned, but he's also the one that, the baseball program that they talk about all the time, the softball program that they're so proud of, he's the one that founded that. So they talk about how they vet people and how there's fingerprinting involved. This was a main dude for Wayside Cross. So we're not just dealing with just kids. We're looking at the big picture. Wayside Cross is the big tree. The kids are just a branch. So we need to keep in mind, when we're dealing with this, what we're getting into. So I please, I urge you to say no to the Wayside Cross project. They do not belong in a permanent structure in the city of Montgomery, sorry, the village of Montgomery. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Next up?
Joni Britton.
Can you say the name again?
Joni, I don't think your mic's on. Joni Britton, and then next after her is Ray Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Joni Britton. I'm a member of St. Olaf Lutheran Church. My husband, Dan, is the president of the church council, and I did speak at the last meeting, and I've listened to all the concerns, and I just want to again summarize the importance of this mission. For the past 14 summers, in fact, summer 15 starts next week at our church, our church has hosted the Urban Youth Program by Wayside Cross in our church basement. This program is for seven weeks, five days a week. Please know that we are honored to host this mission. This program serves 70 students each summer. Their ages range from five to 17. No students will drive to our church. They will be picked up and returned each day using the Wayside Cross vans. Wayside Cross wants to expand this program and reach more children. We feel blessed and delighted that they have asked us to buy some of our property so that they can accomplish this goal. This program teaches about God. You cannot teach about God in a public school setting. Huntington Learning Center will also partner with Wayside Cross to tutor these students academically. And when one is on grade level, he or she is less likely to create behavioral issues. The children will learn basic food preparation and enjoy an indoor basketball court. This youth center will be open until 7:00 PM. It'll never be open on Sundays. Nobody will live at this center. We want these children to become responsible, productive members of our community. To conclude, we truly believe that everyone will benefit from the building and use of this gymnasium for our children. I thank you for your time and attention.
Big Speaker?
Ray Anderson?
I thank you for this opportunity. I'm 86 years old, and I've been attending St. Olaf Church, my wife and I, since the doors were opened in 1969. So I'm very interested in what's going on in the community. I think we've been very good neighbors. We've kept the building up, a lot of grass to mow for 50-some years, and I have been involved down the basement of the church for 14 years. And believe me, they are receiving a wonderful education. They're learning a lot of skills, how to get along with one another. They're learning, they have Bible studies, they're learning about Jesus. They go outside and they have physical activity. We had a preschool at St. Olaf for 20 years, and we didn't receive any complaints that I know of, and I've held every office at the church except for a treasurer. I can't even keep my checkbook in order, so I didn't think I was qualified to be a treasurer, but I've been everything else there. And the lady that spoke first, I would like to have a time with her to come down to the church and go down the basement, and while the kids are there, to see what we're doing. There are a lot of kids that do not have a very good supervision at home, maybe one mother or one dad are trying to raise the kids. And I have personally seen what goes on down there, and lives that have been changed. And we read the news and listen to the news, it's kind of scary. But what we're doing is changing lives so that things could be better. And so, we're blessed to have Robin Sturkle. I've watched her for 14 years, and I would love to have anybody contact me at the church. We will go down sometime this, seven weeks, without her knowing we're coming down, just for you people to see what's going on there. Just, you don't have to take my word for it. It's just a fantastic experience for these kids. It's just, their lives have been changed. So I offer the opportunity for anybody that, you don't have to take my word for it, we'll go down the basement and we'll let you see what's going on there. So it's a beautiful building that they're proposing. We're limited. With 14 years, we get 60 kids every day, and we need more room. And then if it's rainy, we don't have a gym. So this beautiful building, it'd be an awesome addition to Montgomery and help us do a better job of raising our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Dan Britton.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dan Britton, president of St. Olaf Church Council. We've been in Montgomery since 1969, but we've been in the Aurora area for 136 years. As already stated, we've partnered with Wayside Cross for many years. Wayside's sole purpose for this facility is a youth outreach, provide life-learning skills with a Christian basis where these children will have good foundation to develop their lives in the right direction, away from guns, violence, and drugs. Wayside Cross Ministries, the last word in their name, ministries, by definition means spiritual work or services. This is what they do. During the past meetings, I've heard some neighbors state that we didn't know Wayside was even in St. Olaf's basement, or others said, "St. Olaf didn't ask their permission to have Wayside in our basement." Because some of these neighbors didn't even know this was going on in our basement is a testimony to Wayside's positive handling of their youth program. St. Olaf could have tried to sell this property to others like Habitat for Humanity, where there could be eight to 10 different new neighbors. But St. Olaf decided to take a path that was a Christian-based process and worked with good people of Wayside Cross. Wayside holds a 501(c)(3) certification, just like churches do. Some neighbors said that St. Olaf hadn't been good neighbors, but let me restate from an earlier meeting that St. Olaf opened up our basement the Saturday before the public hearing started, so we could listen to our neighbors, address their concerns, and explain what Urban Youth Ministry Program was all about. So we have been very transparent. Judy Brown, she was here at the meeting that we had, and others. Our neighbors have referred to the property for sale as their green space. This is St. Olaf's property that we have owned and well-maintained for over 56 years, and now we envision this property should be used for better purposes for youth. We are asking for the trustees and staff to please approve Wayside's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? All right. Any other members wishing to speak?
You can disregard me on page three over there. Because I'm on a time limit, pardon me that I'm not making eye contact with you most of this time. Several meetings ago, one of our community members reminded all of us that elected officials of the Village of Montgomery serve the residents of Montgomery. I have no intentions of furthering her narrative, but I do have two asks as a part of this. First, the board functions to communicate the messages of the people, and you do not have a right to speak for us when we have a voice. For example, in one meeting, when discussing the physical properties of the physical building, a board member erroneously stated he heard "no community claims of issues" and verbally interpreted this as "no more concerns by the community members." With two minutes to talk, and we are asked to not repeat points by prior members, this is the reason why those testimonies were not heard. The reason why you don't hear these concerns, probably here today, is because a lot of our members aren't here, probably because of family obligations, and unless we retract any previous concerns, then they remain valid and on the table. Secondly, there have been several instances in the past meetings where there was a verbal statement of uncertainty and confusion by the board members. For example, in one meeting, a board member seemed very confused as to why community members thought Wayside Services were okay, but overwhelmingly rejected the idea of a building being erected. If any board member here today is confused or doesn't have enough understanding, the reasonable approach is to maintain the status quo, which is to vote "no" for Wayside, or to talk independently with these concerned citizens, and "no, not at the lion's den at St. Olaf's." Let me take a moment to clarify that particular past misunderstanding. If you turn on the TV, you'll see commercials from Illinois that says, "Welcome to Illinois." Utah, "Welcome to Utah." It's very common practice to accept visitors, because when they travel through respected communities and utilized businesses, they pay taxes on goods that support community projects. Despite the fact that Wayside does not generate community funds, and instead they soak up local grants and donations, the community has tolerated them as guests. The reason we have tolerated them as guests is because, at the end of the day, they have left our community. We reject official membership of Wayside into our communities. Over time at these meetings, both the petitioning party and members of St. Olaf have staked claim in the fact that the community has not really known they existed. Make no mistake, this is really a terrible fact to be proud of. If members of the community and the surrounding agencies have been unaware of their existence, this only speaks to the fact that Wayside has made no meaningful overall contribution to the communities they are trying to service. One of our own board members testified that Krug School has poor learning outcomes. Other Aurora schools are not too far behind. Homelessness is worsening, and we see a vast amount of adult homelessness lording in our communities. If by Wayside's testimony, they have been operating in our community for years upon years, they must take responsibility for the failings that have resulted over time as well. No meaningful change has been noticed in our community, and we must not reward such outcome with a building that doesn't truly, fully serve our Montgomery, Illinois citizens. What is one of the most profound pieces of evidence suggesting Wayside does not make an overall meaningful contribution to our communities has been the lack of presence of parents whose child is being served by Wayside. If countless hours are going to support these children, wouldn't it be reasonable that one of these parents would have devoted at least one hour of their time to be here today to speak on behalf of the changes that they've seen in their children? As an academic, and I work with a lot of interns and a lot of students who are single parents, who work multiple jobs, who still come to school every day, who come to their internships every day, they have the strength and the talent to make these things happen. And yet, here today in these meetings, we have not seen that from them. Another absence to discuss is the loss of parishioners at St. Olaf over the past several decades. At the end of 2023, local news reported 250 parishioners in 1969, and this number dwindled down to about 50. It's quite telling and damning that many parishioners from St. Olaf stopped supporting St. Olaf. And if they discontinued their support, this is further evidence that a support between the union of St. Olaf and Wayside should not be accepted. We have seen several shootings and murders in the last several years. A member last week of St. Olaf rebuked these claims of murder and said that there was zero. If you do a Google search and look at the bottom of those searches, it says this AI-generated result may not be accurate. And in part, that's not accurate because the FBI crime statistics have stopped in 2019. In May of 2022, Gerald Schrob is attempted up to murdering his wife, who was in critical condition. In April 2024, just northwest of us, there was an attempted homicide-suicide. In October 2022, Robert Tekel was shot to death not too far from us in Lebanon Street. Even closer to home, Yajari Gordon killed his wife off of Oak Ridge Lane, nearly about a half a mile or so from Krug School. Sadly, less than 10 days ago, there was another shooting just northeast of us, a few miles away, of a 17-year-old who died. If Wayside and by proxy, St. Olaf are unable to recall these simple history and basic facts, and very much worried about their ability to provide so-called tutoring services to those who are in need. In summary, Wayside has not provided any meaningful contribution to our community since the union with St. Olaf. To date, there has been no needs assessment conducted, and part of the reason why they have not made any meaningful contribution is because currently, every need is being serviced by existing community resources already. We don't need another service to drain from these existing services, and instead must focus on the lives of Montgomery citizens and unifying us around in identity. I'm going to kindly decline the offer to my wife and myself to join St. Olaf in discussions. I've worked many years over a long history with interns and students in connecting to these different nonprofits, and I know exactly the type of services they can do, and unfortunately, a lot of these services they cannot do. We reject the official membership of Wayside, and we ask that you do as well.
All right, any other public comment? Sir, come on down, state your name.
My name's Alan Reynolds, and I spoke to you at the meeting we had last week. Want to share my story with you. I was raised in a home in which there was a lot of physical violence. My father was an alcoholic. And one time, I got into a fight with him, and he beat me up so badly that I found myself in the hospital for four days. That's the kind of environment in which I was placed. But then, one day, I met this man who started to befriend me. Actually, I share this with you, too. Just to tell, it just reminds me of where my background could have led. I've got a scar on my shoulder blade from a stab wound I received in a fight with another gang member. And one time, I got taken into police custody because I pulled a knife on someone. I remember Detective Constable Huckstep talking to me. But then, this man who became my friend and behaved like a father to me, told me about God's love in Jesus. And he was born into my heart, and I knew a transformation had taken place, because Jesus Christ enabled me to forgive that father who had so badly physically abused me as a child. a child. Now, what the Wayside Ministries is doing, it's addressing issues like violence and drug trafficking and stuff like that. And because I've seen what God in Christ has done in my life, I value the work that's taking place with them. And I think what we need to do, you know, we can talk about, we can talk very negatively about problems that exist in this community, about drug trafficking and other violence and stuff like that. But it's better for us to be positive. And Wayside Cross Ministries is wanting to find a solution to these kind of problems. We have a person who's a member of our church, and he was in prison for nine and a half years for drug trafficking. And he encountered Jesus Christ, and now his life has been changed. He met Jesus in a penitentiary. And I know Wayside Cross works in penitentiaries. But I'm sharing all this because I believe that Wayside Cross has a very positive ministry to people in our neighborhood. So I think we need to find ways in which we can support this project. Thank you.[705.43][705.43](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Alan.[708.12][708.12](APPLAUSE). Okay. Unless there's anybody else, we'll move on. Okay? Go ahead.[716.81][716.81](CROSSTALK). Welcome.
Hi. Leanna Prikup. I've spoken before. I'd like to say, along the lines of the last gentleman that spoke, I came from a similar situation. Alcoholic father, broken family, lots of things like that. And I did have people in my life that made a difference, and thank God that I did, because here I am today. I am a medical professional. I have been for 35 years. I have raised an absolutely beautiful daughter that I'm proud of, more than anything on the face of this earth, who has overcome so many things, physically, unfortunately. And I don't have a problem with ministry and how it affects people's lives. I don't think any of us who are citizens that live in that area do. Wayside Cross keeps wanting to give you this big, beautiful, shiny thing wrapped up in a bow. That's great. I don't have a problem with what they do. I truly don't. And I don't think any of the neighbors do. Part of the issue that we're having is that we're hearing them talk out of both sides of their mouth repeatedly. There's going to be a kitchen, there's not going to be a kitchen. It's not going to be commercial, but yet we're going to do this. We're not going to put Wayside Cross anywhere on the sign like we were asked, but oh, now we're going to slip it in, because that's just what we want to do, because we don't give an actual answer and stick to it. We decide to do what we want to do, when we want to do it. There has been so much of this that has happened since this has started. I think it's absolutely disgraceful. I think it is completely disrespectful to all the neighbors and everybody else who lives in that area that has to deal with this. They keep saying they're such good neighbors, but yet they don't listen to anything anyone is saying that lives in that area. It's not something that we are looking forward to. There's kids that are being bused in. They're not kids from the neighborhood. They're kids from Aurora. That's where they do their service from. Why can't they find a place in Aurora? Thank you for your time.[844.68][844.68](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Leanna.[847.12][847.12](APPLAUSE). Any other public comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. I do just want to say, I appreciate all of the comments, you know, on both sides of the issue. I think people are opened up and shared some very personal aspects of themselves in this room, and I do really appreciate that. We value the insight. Obviously, I let everyone make their comments far in excess of the two minutes, because I feel, you know, in my heart and soul, that you making your public comment to the government here is kind of one of the things that we're supposed to do. So I do appreciate that, and we'll talk more about the issue, more about this when we get to address it. But thanks for your comments this evening. All right. And move on to the consent agenda and then entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the May 12th Village Board Meeting, minutes of the May 12th Executive Session Meeting, accounts payable summary report for May 27, 2025, resolution 2025-013 authorizing the acceptance of public improvements at 321 and 323 Clinton Duplex. Motion to approve. Tucker? Go ahead.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
I carry 6-0. Thank you. Under items for separate action tonight, we have Item A, Recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2025-005, Annexation Amendment, and a special use for a PUD for the Spartan Athletic Park, sorry, Aurora University and Spartan Athletic Park. Steph? Go ahead.
President Brawley, as stated, Aurora University has submitted a petition to annex two parcels that are adjacent to the existing Spartan Athletic Park. They're also requesting to incorporate those parcels into the existing PUD that was adopted for the athletic park. The subject properties are immediately to the east, generally known as 1630 Jericho. And then the undeveloped parcel is immediately to the west, at what would be the southwest corner of Jericho and Edgeline. They are intending to build a varsity baseball field on the western parcel, but have no current plans for the east parcel at this time. They've asked to amend the existing PUD to include those parcels, as well as to eliminate the requirement for Edgeline Drive to extend through the property, as was originally required. As you may recall, a traffic study was done as part of TIF 2 and determined that the Edgeline connection was no longer necessary. So the amendment to the PUD would eliminate that requirement. Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct the public hearing on May 21 and recommended approval, subject to approval of the Platts by the village engineer, submittal of Platts of Disconnection for Jericho Road. We do have the boundary agreement with Aurora, so once they annex in, then we'll need to de-annex the right-of-way, because that is technically per the boundary agreement supposed to be with the city of Aurora. And then you have two ordinances before you for consideration for first reading. The first one is the approval of the annexation, and the second one is the approval of this PUD amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The petitioners are also here.
Thank you. Questions of staff or the petitioner? And I know they're here this evening.
I actually do have a question. So there were some neighbors that spoke out, I see on the bottom here, that notes of including the lights, noise, impact on well water quality, and of course, you just addressed the traffic issue. Was any of that addressed by the petitioner at the Plan Commission?
Yes, it was, and they can explain it again.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Goldsmith of Dykman Law Firm. With me is Jeff King, who's Executive Vice President of Aurora University. We did hear one comment from, I assume he was a neighbor, at the last Plan Commission meeting. Most of his comments are issues that this board approved on the basis of the village and industry review of the plan. And so stormwater, water, lighting, the lighting meets your, it's actually better at the perimeter than your requirements. He mentioned noise. We have never had, we had, I guess, one noise complaint a year ago. In all the years we've been operating, there's only been one complaint. Mr. King is the current complaint receiver, and he's had none. The university some time ago was concerned about the students in the neighborhood, because students lived in Aurora near the university, and there was some little wildness going on. That was clamped down, and there's actually a code of conduct that all the students have to agree before they come to university. So there just aren't problems like there might have been in the past, and particularly at this facility. But we did check, generally as to operations like that, we do have some nighttime summer activities, but the lighting there is all downward-facing, controlled at the perimeter, and we, you know, it meets your requirements. You know, I can't say he might not see a light out there, but it's not facing any of the homes to the west, and everything else is too far away to be affected, so.
Okay. I am going to make a huge assumption that it is the same gentleman I spoke to maybe about a month ago, who had brought up some of these concerns. I spoke to him after the regular Plan Commission meeting at the beginning of May. My question, I guess, would go to Engineer Ott. So when we initially, and I know this is before your time, when we initially approved the project with AU, wouldn't part of that be testing the water in the area? The gentleman that I spoke with is on well water. He said there were some concerns with sulfur smell, things like that. So I just wanted to kind of take a step back. Isn't that something that would be tested when this was originally being built?
I don't believe that we require developers to test, you know, nearby residential wells as part of the development.
No, I'm just talking about the water table that's there. I mean, is that part of the normal process, that you just do a test?
Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
So we use city water, so we're not in the, we don't have a well on site. We cap the wells from the houses, and the sanitary fields were closed. So we're not contributing anything to the neighborhood, because we have Fox Metro and we have city water, so.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know, so I appreciate it.
But, I mean, it's unfortunate that he didn't just reach out, because he could talk to Mr. King. We'd be happy to sit down with him and go over his concerns.
So if I do hear back from him, I'm going to ask him to contact Mr. King. Okay. All right. Thank, I appreciate the answer. That's what I wanted to know about.
Sorry. I didn't mean to give Engineer a pick.
No, that was helpful.
Appreciate it.
Sign of a good attorney. Answers for the engineers.[1301.01][1301.01](LAUGHING). All right. Any other questions for the petitioner or staff?
No. Motion for the recommendation.
Oh, and the recommendation, perfect.
You're accepting the recommendation. Okay.
Second? Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Dan for.
Okay. Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Is there any objection of putting either of those on consent for a future meeting?
No.
Perfect. Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to items, it looks like D, E, and F. Recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2025-006, Annexation, Rezoning, Special Use for Utility Scale Solar Energy System, and Variations. This is Synergy Power and Sonia.
Thank you. So Synergy has submitted their petitions to annex a piece of property that is located, sorry, I don't know if that was me or not, that is located on Spencer Street at the end of Oakton, it's 21 acres. Currently, the area is being farmed. They are requesting annexation with rezoning to the agriculture district. Solar fields are classified as special uses in our ag district and our manufacturing districts. Given the proximity to residential in the area, staff thought it was better to search, request the ag zoning versus manufacturing zoning. Unfortunately, 21 acres does not meet the minimum lot size requirement for the ag district, so they are requesting a variance for the lot size. They're also requesting special use for the utility scale solar. They are going to be approximately 34 feet tall, went their highest inclination, and will cover approximately 16 acres of the 21-acre lot, and will be enclosed by a seven-foot tall vinyl-coated chain-link fence. This is a unique property, and that is not currently accessible to village water or sanitary, and so would be difficult to bring those utilities in for any other type of development. Utility scale solar does not require water or sanitary service, so this seems to be a good fit for that particular property. Additionally, there is flood plain on the property, and this is a use that would be allowed to be in the flood plain, you know, provided they require, meet our Kent County stormwater requirements, but that is a permissible use within the flood plain area. So they had the public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 21. They voted 5-0 to recommend approval with conditions, and that would include staff approval of the final landscape plan that would provide for landscape screening along Spencer Street to screen it from the residences that are across the street, village engineer approval of the final engineering plan, flood plain and stormwater reports, fire district approval and restoration of the site, once the use is discontinued. There are two ordinances before you tonight for first reading. The first one is for the annexation of the property. The second ordinance is for the rezoning, special use and hand variance. I do have the petitioners on the Zoom call that can answer any questions that you have, and I am available as well.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Again. Okay. I just want to clarify a couple pieces as I read through this. So the owner of the land is Mr. Ochoa, correct? And then, VAP Power LLC, doing business as Synergy Power, will be leasing the land from them for the solar field, correct?
I will let Chad answer that question from Synergy.
Yes, that is correct. We also have a purchase option in front of them as well. Thanks for having us here today.
Yes, thank you for being here to answer the questions. And then what is the initial term of this lease, please?
It's 20 years.
And you, I'm sorry, and you said you do have the option to purchase, correct?
That's correct. We have put that in front of the landowner as well.
Okay. And then?
So we have an executed option, I believe, to purchase, and we had also had one for the lease as well. So we, I believe we had both options on the table for the landowner.
Is there a specific timeframe before you could purchase it?
I believe we have up to a year, or we can take a look, I don't know. Pat Burns, he's part of my team, he can answer that. We do also have a presentation we can show you on the project. The modules, just real quick on the clarification, they will not be more than 15 feet tall at their highest point. I believe the 30-foot height was just for the poles.
Okay.
Just want to clarify that.
What poles is that?
There's poles that come off the system to connect to the grid with ComEd. So those poles, there'll be like two or three of them on our side and two of them on ComEd side, so they'll meet near the, I can show you on the layout if you'd like. We have the presentation that we can go over as well, again. But the poles meet each other, and that's where the poles will be, I believe, up to 35 to 40 feet tall. So there'll be like four or five poles.
Got it. That makes sense.
Sure.
And do you currently have a facility? I'm sorry.
I have one more question, please. So the thing that's always really important to me when we've had these requests come before us, is the restoration after the lease term is up?
Sure.
I see that, or I did hear Director App talk about a restoration plan. Again, I guess for Director App, this piece that was at the back end of the packet for the Plan Commission, is this what is considered the restoration plan? The types of plants that would go in there? It's a list of plants, so I'm guessing this is the restoration plan?
I think that is part of the restoration plan, as well as the maintenance of the area, keeping it naturalized, because currently it is just farm.
Right.
So the non-paved areas are going to have naturalized plantings as well.
Okay. And then I'm going to go back to Mr. Chad. I'm sorry, I don't see, I can't see the last name.
Oh, Chwazi.
I'm going to stick with Mr. Chaz, please.[1743.11][1743.11](LAUGHING).
You can call me Mr. Chad.
So when the, you know, when the term is up, if you are not considering continuing with the solar plan, would that be the use then, would be to turn it back to a naturalized field?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, I can explain. The state of Illinois actually requires sites that are farmed to enter what's called Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement, or AMA for short. Because this site was farmed, we're going to be entering into that agreements required by state law in Illinois, and that will have requirements to turn the Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, I can explain. The state of Illinois actually requires sites that are farmed to enter what's called an agricultural impact mitigation agreement, or AMA for short. Because this site was farmed, we're going to be entering into that agreements required by state law in Illinois. And that will have requirements to turn the site back into a, you know, its natural state. So in this case, farming. In addition to that, it requires a decommissioning bond. So we'll have to post a decommissioning bond that's commensurate with what the requirements are to decommission this site. And that also excludes any sort of salvage value. So typically for a system size of this nature, we're talking over $100,000 bond to decommission the site. So we will have to post a bond as well.
Okay, thank you. That, that was all of my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Do you currently have any facilities in Illinois?
Trusty Brody, yes, we do. We have over 11 operating systems that we've built since 2017 in Illinois. We have over 500 systems that we've built throughout our 16-year company history, of which I've been with the company 16 years. And then we have another four projects that are completing construction in the next two months. And then on top of that, we're starting another four projects in the next two months. Our senior project manager who lives in Illinois and Lake County is with us today as well, Ryan Kretschmer. He's here to answer any questions with respect to stormwater and/or questions, I believe, a few of the other trustees may have on that topic as well as hail protection and a few other matters. But yes, we have, we have built a number of systems in Illinois. And we have a number of folks that actually are part of our project management team that live in Illinois as well, including Mr. Kretschmer.
Awesome, thank you. Yes, I have Chad. Nice to speak to you again. Talked to you after the Planning Commission meeting.
Hi Doug, nice to see you again and talk to you.
Related to the storm damage, hail damage, and leakage of heavy metals into the soil and what your recovery process looks like, what your reaction plan is if that were to happen. I just want to make sure that we're protected.
Absolutely. So first and foremost, let me tell you, Trusty Marisak, that we, we use what's called photovoltaic modules. They're the raw ingredient in the sand. So I know there's been some issues with the cadmium modules as far as folks being concerned. I've never actually heard of a leak occurring or any seepage from any of the projects, but weren't any of the panels to break. You're talking about PV, which is just straight silicon. Again, raw ingredient is sand. We've never had any sort of leakage on any of your modules. We have had broken modules from, in Indiana, I believe, we had a few modules that were broken because of hail. We've had people throw rocks at the modules. They've broken. We've always replaced them within a few weeks. So we've never had any sort of issues. With that being said, we are taking protective measures. With hail going forward on our systems, we have the option to go in stow mode, which essentially means that the modules are banked at a, a degree. It can be stowed basically virtually without anyone doing it manually. And so we are able, we do have that function as, as well at our disposal. We do, we will also have an emergency response plan, not just for hail damage, but also obviously for fire. We actually have the fire department, we, we engage with them prior to the building permit process. We show them our emergency response plan prior to pulling the building permit. And we were committed to doing that on this project, which provides ways to disconnect the system manually. Again, Ryan Kretschmer is here if you have further questions on that. And we will also do that again if needed, once the system is constructed prior to operation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one simple question. In addition to any of the plantings and the seven-foot fencing, are there any video monitoring of the, the grounds 24/7?
In, in cases where we've needed it, we have provided that. It's kind of on a case-by-case basis. Typically, we've only needed to, and Ryan, maybe you can speak to this. I don't know if he's, if he's on with us. But it's only been needed in areas where there's been vandalism. Like I said, with kids have thrown rocks at the modules and things like that, or, or neighbors, you know. You know, usually it's young adults, adolescents that typically do that kind of stuff. The, the system will be fenced, there will also be vegetative screening along the west side of that project area. There's nice existing vegetative screens all along the northeast and south. I was there last week when I was there for the planning board meeting in person. And those trees are above like 20 to 25 feet tall. So you'll have nice vegetative screening around the site in addition to our own vegetative screen that we're going to put along that west side along, I believe, Spencer.
Okay. Any other questions? Perfect. Does that obtain a motion for item D, the recommendation?
Trusty Marisak.
Yes.
Trusty Brzaska.
Yes.
Trusty Guyer.
Yes.
Trusty Spurling.
Yes.
Trusty Baumann.
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay, here's six to zero. Any objection of putting this on for consent at a future meeting? Okay. All right, moving on to.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to the last Plan Commission item is, I believe, is a recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission of PZC 2025-008. This is a text amendment, a preliminary plat of subdivision, a special use with variations for Wayside Cross Ministries Youth Activity Center. Go ahead, Sonia.
Thank you, President Brody. Wayside Cross is before you again for their youth activity center. This is approximately 12,500 square foot facility that would be located on the west side of the property at 1233 Douglas Avenue that currently contains St. Olaf Church. The facility would serve at-risk youth with programs such as instructional sports, sports leagues, tutoring, homework, health, cooking classes, technology classes, as well as a summer camp. Previously, they had requested a rezoning to be one and a special use for indoor recreation due to concerns expressed by both residents and members of the village board about the proposed B1 zoning. The petitioner has withdrawn their original petition and instead requested a text amendment that would allow the proposed use while keeping the existing R1 zoning. The text amendment would reduce the number of variances that were previously requested for the development. They would still require a special use approval, which is before you tonight. They anticipate surveying an average of 35 participants per day during the school year in their after-school program, approximately 70 participants during the day for their summer program. Their operating hours are from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. for their after-school program, 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. for their weekday summer camp. Instructional sports leagues would be hosted in the facility on Saturdays. Administrative and cleaning staff may be on-site earlier, but there will be no programming on Sundays. In any instance, all programming will be completed by 7:00 p.m. on any night Monday through Saturday. The proposed text amendment is going to revise the definition for club, lodge, or hall to include after-school programs and summer camps. So it would say, "Club, lodge, or hall may include after-school programs and camps for children, but does not include a daycare center or daycare home." It would add this as a special use to the R1 district. The petitioner has also requested two variances to gain relief for the shape of the newly created lot. So they are proposing to subdivide the lot into two lots. St. Olaf would remain on one lot and the new lot would be for their proposed youth activity center. That lot is L-shaped, so it does have frontage on two, two streets, but is not actually at a corner. So it's an irregularly shaped lot that does require a variance from our subdivision standards. The second variance they need is to reduce the amount of landscape screening that is required along the north property line, where there is no proposed improvements. The petitioners did add berming along the west and north property lines where the improvements are, based on previous board's feedback. So the plan that is before you with the new petition does include that berming as well as changes to the required evergreen plantings that were requested with the previous petition. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearing on May 21st and voted 3-2 in favor of approving the petitions with conditions that are outlined in the report. This includes final approval of plans as well as restrictions on the use, which would be that the facility shall be restricted to those that are described in their letter of intent that's dated February 26, 2025, and shall not include drug rehabilitation. That the youth shall be restricted to serving youth under the age of 18. That all programming will end by 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and that there will be no programming on Sunday. And that should any problems stemming from insufficient parking be generated by the use of this facility, that the property owner will either provide the village with an agreement with the adjacent property owner, i.e. St. Olaf Church, or they shall add additional parking on their subject property in accordance with our code. So you have that vote before you. Since it was a 3-2 vote, it does not technically come as a recommendation, but we do have to give their report to you. So the report was that they voted 3-2 in favor of the special use, the text amendment, and the preliminary plat of subdivision as well as the variations.
Does the 3-2 non-recommendation change our vote threshold here?
No, it does not.
Perfect. Okay. All right, thank you.
So we do have the two ordinances bef, well, actually, yes, we have two ordinances before you. The first one is vacating the Elliott Avenue right-of-way that bisects the property. That has to be the first one that is voted on. And then after that is the zoning one that grants the text amendment special use and variances. We are requesting waiver of first reading on this. Petitioners are here to answer any questions. They have provided a video that's a testimonial that they would like to play for the board. So I have that queued up to share if that, please, is the word. Good, all right. Let me see if I can do this from my laptop here. It does not seem to be letting me play audio. All right, we will try it on the main computer. That should be it. I have to share the screen, correct, Sonia?
Yeah.
I'll just click on the green part and then it should show them. There you go.
So I'm a police officer in the city here. And the way, the way I kind of come visit and collaborate is when I, whenever we get a chance, we volunteer to come down here and play sports with the kids, basketball, dodgeball is probably one of the favorites. So we have a couple other officers come down, and actually a handful of officers come down and kind of hang out with the kids. A lot of these, a lot of the kids we know from, from, you know, serving in the area. So it's been a nice, a nice collaboration going on. It's kind of brought, you know, obviously the UIM together with, with obviously the police department, with the citizens, with, you know, the people that work for UIM. It's, it is a team effort and that it's always good to see how the team kind of, you know, works together and stuff like that. Just seeing a change in, in people that, you know, maybe I saw around, but not as much. But now I'm, I'm, you know, talking with them, watching their kids play, or, you know, with the parents or whatever the case may be at the summer camp when they're picking up their kids, just kind of talking with them a little bit. So it, it just, it's really impacted the whole, the whole area really, and especially the ones that we have direct contact with. It, it's been a positive impact. Just, again, that whole win-win, the team effort and stuff, it's, it's been nice to see.
Well, my name is Enrique Aguirre. Been maybe, it's been since like elementary. Elementary, I studied through the whole program, decided doing the after program.
So my name is Edgar Roman. I'm a firefighter EMC. I've probably been with UIM since like elementary. We would do like the after-school program and like the, the summer program as well, all those extra stuff.
18 years.
And then we had the time when UIM brought, that's pretty, that's one of the big things.
UIM helped me was just helping me with like the schools, keeping me on track on the grades, still keeping in contact with some of the friends that I grew up with, with the program.
UIM, they, they would help us any way they could. So like after, after the, after school program was over, they would tell us like, hey, what are you doing over the summer? We have a good summer program or we have a baseball like team or we have this, we have this. And like they would always give us things to do. It's a good program.
Yeah, because honestly, if it, if it wasn't for them, like I wouldn't say just because, like for instance, because we, we used to hang around with people that wasn't like in the right, I guess you could say like in the right moment, where like they were in gangs or just in like things that you weren't supposed to do is what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, like you could tell who would go play baseball with UIM and who would hang out with that. And then you can tell who didn't make it.
Good evening. My name is Kanaja Jones. I am a General Sessions Deputy Clerk here in Nashville, Tennessee. I want to start off by saying UIM has impacted me in various ways. First and foremost being putting God on the forefront of my life in any and all aspects. Because here at UIM, we believe in Bible study and using God in everything that we do within our attitudes, our mindsets, and the way we go about our life. Secondly, being a leader, but not just any leader, a strong leader. And I can say that from personal experience. It's been times where I have to step up when I'm going through things. I have to know that it's not only just about me. I have younger youth watching me. So I have to be a strong leader. Thirdly, helping others. We have done that in various ways by cleaning up the community as far as picking up trash and/or stopping by nursing homes and just having lunch with them or just even having a small conversation that makes their day. So I say someone should support UIM because we have shown in various ways how we have supported not only each other, but our community, which still putting God first.
We collaborate at the Fox Valley Park District with the Urban Youth Ministries to provide athletic fields for their sports programs, particularly the Neighborhood Baseball League. Urban Youth Ministries with the Fox Valley Park District is rebuilding better communities. And the better communities are with the young people that need structured, organized activity to play in a safe environment, feel significant about themselves, and have a sense of belonging. So it's good use of taxpayer money to contribute to, to Urban Youth Ministries with their youth programs. With the Urban Youth Ministries and with youth sports is that here at the Fox Valley Park District, I tell all of my colleagues is that in our professional relationship, I want you to feel safe, significant, and belonging. And I learned that from actually Coach Lou Holtz at Notre Dame Football. And if you really think about it, it's what God wants us to have also, that you are going to be safe, significant, and belonging through the Neighborhood Baseball League, that they belong, they belong to the ministry, they belong to a team, they may belong to a sponsorship. It's just the right thing to do. And so it's very simple, is the feeling that we all want. Feel safe, significant.
Thank you. Did the petitioner have anything additional this evening?
I have a three-minute tards.
Well, I have a three-minute tards. Nothing new under the sun, because you've heard us many times. Dear Mayor—Mayor Brawley, and all the esteemed trustees and the management team, my name is James Lucos. I am the executive director of Wayside Cross Ministries. I have been truly privileged and blessed to be part of this remarkable organization for the last 27 years. Throughout this time, I've had the honor and witness seeing hundreds of individuals and numerous families experiencing transformation through the powerful gospel of Jesus Christ, including Thomas Kokorales and the lady who took his name several minutes ago. Over the course of the last four meetings, both planning and zoning and trustee sessions, you have undoubtedly heard a variety of perspectives, from the positive to the challenging. I truly appreciate your patience, understanding, and readiness to listen one more time. We are a Bible-based, Christ-centered, not-for-profit Christian organization that has been positively impacting individuals and families for nearly 100 years. Since our founding in 1928, we have dedicated ourselves to addressing the complex issues of poverty, addiction, abuse, and despair, providing restoration and spiritual transformation to hundreds of men, women, children, and youth. Urban Youth Ministry has been a vital part of our mission for over 30 years. Our goal is to empower young boys and girls age five to 17 to discover and achieve their God-given potential. To advance this mission, we propose the construction of the new facility, the WCM Youth Center. This new facility will serve as a safe haven for at-risk youth in the Montgomery and Aurora communities, offering essential programs such as tutoring and homework assistance, technology, cooking classes, summer camps, and instructional sports. Our vision is to create a nurturing environment where youth can thrive and grow. As you already know, currently, this property is zoned as R1 Presidential District. We are seeking a special use permit to allow for after-school programs and indoor recreation, including dedicated ba—dedicated basketball courts to facilitate our sports programming. The WCM Youth Center will be a beacon of hope and a resource for personal growth and development impacting hundreds of young people for years to come. We are confident that this center will stand as a testament to our collective commitment to the well-being of our youth, and will be built for the glory of God. Thank you for considering our proposal. We look forward to the opportunity to collaborate with you to building a brighter future for the youth of Montgomery. Since my name was invoked by the lady who spoke first, if I may take few minutes to defend not being defensive—I don't have an attorney beside me, but I have the greatest advocate, Lord Jesus Christ, who has been helping the ministry for the last 100 years. She mentioned that our relationship with the city of Aurora is not friendly. That is not true. We had one incident. We dealt that very effectively. And in fact, UIM is supported financially by Aurora City. And you heard Thomas Kokorales' name many times. He served his time, 36 years in the prison, and because of his good behavior, he was released by the prison system. He had no other place to go. We stayed true to our mission. He came on a Friday afternoon—Friday evening, and the earliest I could meet with him was the following Monday. I had an hour and a half conversation with him. What prison system could not do in 36 years, God was able to change his heart within one and a half hours of time. And he wept like a—a—a small boy in front of me, and he professed to be a Christian, and subsequently was baptized by the local church called Oasis in Aurora. And he's doing extremely well after five years, and he is now living in Peoria happily. And then I was told here—we were told that we sued the city. We never sued the city. The civil rights attorneys from Chicago sued the city, not Wayside Cross Ministries. And she mentioned that hundreds of—hundred thousand people protested against us. That is not true. There was a rumor that a couple thousand people would be coming and protesting one Friday afternoon or Friday morning, and we had about 200 police officers. We provided 200—I mean, 2,000 bottles of water, thinking that they'll come. There were six people showed up, and we were told all six of them were paid protesters. She talked about the media. We did not play victim with them. I invited every one of them, including New York Times. He spent two and a half hours with me, toured the facility, and then subsequently wrote a—a full-page article, everything in favor of us. Not because we played pity party, because they were totally convinced after seeing what we have been doing for 100 years. And then—well, one of the main reason, in fact, our supporters' numbers increased significantly because they were so impressed with us because we stayed with our mission. Our mission is to aff—to empower the afflicted by the power of the gospel that was accomplished with Thomas Kokorales. And she did mention John Bedal. Yes, that is true, that it was prior to my time, 28 years ago. You all know that in life, we deal with bad apples once in a while, and he was one of the bad apples. And we never had an incident like that in the past or afterwards. And I hope and pray that it will never happen again. And somebody mentioned that we have been speaking from two sides of our mouth, and I don't think that is true. We have been very straightforward and faithful in all that we have communicated thus far. And we also talked about the sign, and I said last time, we are very proud of our name, Wayside Cross Ministries, and cross being our middle name. And we—glory in the cross. And yet, I said, wherever we can compromise, we will compromise, and we did. Our proposed name for the youth center is WCM Youth Center. And I believe I covered everything what was accused of. And also, for information, either mayor or mayor's chief of staff, or one of the senior staff members, always were on our opening day of our baseball camp every year. So they are good friend of our ministry. Any question for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jim?
I do. I have something, not a question, a comment. I'm not going to debate the value of the program. We've done this over and over again. I—I feel it has value. But we're—we're being asked to make a decision tonight, and decisions have consequences. And the decision that troubles me is that we're being asked to grant a text amendment, a club, a lodge, or a hall. And I'm not—I don't have a problem with adding the verbiage to the text amendment. My problem is adding this as a special use to R1, because we're going to open the door for someone to come forward with a club, lodge, or hall. And we actually had a resident at one of the planning and zoning commissions state publicly that they have a large parcel on Sherman, that they would love to come in and develop it. I don't remember if they used lodge or hall, but I—I do not want to open a club, a lodge, or a hall to a residential. I—I just don't. Nothing against your program. This is—a this is—I'm looking at this overall into the future, not just this one instance, not just this one request, but what this may bring forward down the road, as far as other people wanting to do this within our residential setting. And not just in this area. This would be anywhere within the village.
And just for clarification for the rest of the boards, Sonia Brandy, could you just explain what a special use is and how you get one?
I will leave that for council to answer at the moment.
So a special use, you have to—I mean, you can read the findings of fact that have—that you have to actually meet, but it's typically—it has to be appropriate for the area. So the—the, like, the—the infrastructure has to be able to support it. It has to be can endanger the health, safety, or welfare of the surrounding areas. There's also requirements regarding, like, the orderly development of the area. So it would be something where it has to be appropriate for that specific location to be—to be able to—or for the village to be able to say yes to it.
So the planning commission and the village board would both have to find any special use, including this one, is not—does not injure, does not decrease property value, all the things that we have to do from a zoning standpoint, so that nobody gets anything by right. Nobody can come in tomorrow and ask for a club. It would come back.
No, they have to go through the process. I understand that. But, you know, we—we have residents here that they feel that this specific project does not fit within their neighborhood, and it's going to cause problems in their neighborhood. I—I just—I've always been of the mindset is, you know, once we open it up and we allow it, we're going to go down that road, and that's going to open us up for possible litigation from a petitioner saying, "Well, you gave it to them. We're not in any worse." "Well, you're going to have more traffic." "Well, we'll push the traffic off on this road." And then all of a sudden, they've—they've come up with all these workarounds, have an attorney come in, and then all of a sudden, we're putting a club, a hall, or a lodge within a residential area, just because we allow it. If—if we don't—it's—it's very simple. If we don't allow it, we don't have to deal with it. And that's where I'm coming from.
I think one of the differentiating factors here is you already have it in that location. You're not going to have too many petitioners coming to say, "I'm already located here. I would like a special use to put another building here." So I think that's a huge differentiating factor in this situation.
Right. Well, we have it just right down the street, this is zone R1, and this resident has already said that they would like to develop this large parcel within a residential as a hall or a club. I—I mean, they made that comment publicly. I was there. So we're going to have to deal with that.
Sure.
Down the road.
I would like to—could I just—
I still—you know, I have no problem with this being—
I'm sorry to interrupt, but that resident that came and spoke was hosting a banquet facility, not a club, lodge, or hall, was what they had been requesting.
Right. Well, I get that. But then, we've been down this road before. They'll come in and say, "Well, it's—it's a hall. It's not a banquet. It's a hall." They'll just—they'll change the definition of it. There-there's ways to get around things. I'm just trying to look down the road for potential issues down the road. I—I still don't understand, you know, in R1, we allow churches and we allow schools. I don't know why, you know, based on what I'm hearing that they're going to do in this building, their teaching. Why can't we just call it a school and forego this text amendment? Why—why do we have to change it to allow a club, a lodge, or a hall to be an R1? And that's always been my—that's always been my issue from day one, is if it's R1 and it's—it's a school, I mean, it's R1 and it's a school. I don't want to change the zoning, and I don't want to—I don't want to change the definition of the text amendment either.
That's a point taken. I—I—I hear what you're saying. I'm—I'm not afraid that a future board can look at the facts of a different applicant, that may or may not happen, and make an—an educated opinion at that time. But I totally get your point.
Actually, building on what Trustee Guyer said, I was just curious, because that text amendment was kind of rolled in with everything. And I get it, because it applies to this project, but then it's also going to be, you know, something that anyone can look at and come in and make a request. So I was just curious why this would all be packaged together, and why we wouldn't look at the text amendment separately.
I think—I mean, from where I sit, one of the things that we talked about specifically at the last meeting, we heard lots of concern and objection from residents stemming from —and lots of the—we didn't talk about it tonight, but at that time, it was, "I'm concerned that you're changing it to commercial zoning in our neighborhood," and that's my big concern here, because then they can do anything under B1 or B2, whatever it was. And at the meeting, we kind of spitballed, "Is there a way that this can stay residential?" Because if their use of the property ceases, their special use expires, if you read the ordinance, and it's residential R1 property, just as it has been for 60 years. So that was kind of came out of this conversation. To bifurcate it at that point, I think, would be disingenuous, honestly, to say, like, "Oh, this is a separate issue. They're the same issue. It's the same process. It's specifically to ensure that this property remains a residentially-zoned property. Should the use ever cease to exist, and they move out, they demo the building, it's back to the way it was." Or if somebody wanted to come in, they have to follow this exact special use, or come back and get rezon—rezoning at a later time. So that was this conversation.
Right. I get that that's what prompted the—this idea of doing this text amendment. I just—well, we—we know where I stand on the whole thing, so I mean, it's not going to change how I vote. I just don't think that—I—I'm—I'm just uncomfortable that the whole thing's rolled together. But like I said, it's not changing where I'm at.
I was going to say, that wasn't your concern before.
No.
You have—
No. I—I have whole lots of concerns.
You've—you've got your—you've got your things.
Right. I'm not being disingenuous, because I've said from the beginning, R1 is a school. I've—I—
I get that. And I wasn't calling you that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. That—that's it. I—that was my—my question about that, so I'm done.
Mr. Bowman?
Um, doubt that. The last time was before us. That was my concern. I didn't want it to change it from R1. I didn't want to change the zoning. Yes, my question for council would be, is—does it stand for any legal challenge on a special use within R1? If the resident so desired, could that special use be challenged?
By the residents?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, certainly—
With counsel, of course, but—
I was going to say, certainly you could file a lawsuit on anything, but I—I don't think that there's any question as to whether it meets the—the findings of fact, and that would be how they would challenge it. I mean, it's—it's a use that's already there. They're just putting in a building, so—
It is. So I would follow what Trustee Guyer's question. Being a religious-based ministry operating in a church, why does it not fall under a church definition as opposed to club, lodge, or hall?
Can I look at the definition of church?
Give me one second to pull up the definition.
And then while you're looking that up, I do have a question, since the issue was brought up of a—a bad apple on-on staff. What type of background checks or anything would be provided on—or are currently being provided with, any instructors, staff, teachers that have access to the children?
Sure, I can answer that. Thank you. I'm Robyn Stirkle. You've heard from me many times. Thank you for listening again. We do background check fingerprinting for everybody that works at our facility, especially those who work with children. So that was back in 1998. I can't speak for that, but I can speak for now, because I hire everybody that works with our children. And everybody has background checks, including all of our baseball coaches. So we keep our children very safe.
Okay. Are the three of you in this row fingerprinted and background checked as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm—probably four different places. I'm—they—they own my fingerprints. Yes. And—and the rest of us as well. Can I talk real quickly while I'm up here? Okay. So my mind's racing in a lot of places, and I want to be defending my own name, because it was said several times, and I don't want to take a lot of time up with that. I will say that the mayor at the time— the mayor at the time, when I had to go in front of the alderman and at a city meeting, the money was going to be taken away from us through the Coquerales situation at the very beginning, when we usually yearly get money from the city. And so I decided to go talk to the board to say, what does that have to do with the children? And so I spoke to them. I told them what we continue to do with our children. And the mayor, the next day, called a press release and gave us back all the money. And he has been giving it to us, or the city has been giving it to us every year, because they believe in us, and I do believe that they believe in Wayside as well, because they wouldn't give taxpayer money unless they believed in us and that we were a safe place. As I think about the community, and I think about, when we talk about Montgomery, because I know that's who you all are here representing, and that means a lot. And I'm thinking about facilities and places people go. And I was thinking about the Stewart Complex, which I know half of it is on Aurora and half of it is on Montgomery. Is that correct? Am I right about that?
It's all Montgomery.
All Montgomery.
It's all Montgomery now. Okay. So I frequently go out there because I have grandchildren. And I was just out there for soccer. And at that facility, there were people from many cities. And I know that because the children that my children play with and are on a team come from Aurora, they come from Oswego, they come from Yorkville, and they're all using a facility in Montgomery. Not just Montgomery people are using that facility. So when I think about UIM and where it's going to be, I pray alongside St. Olaf, which to me, as we're speaking, I know, I understand what you're saying, Dan, and I believe that we are a church school, if you will. We are not a club. We are not going to hold banquets. We're not going to have adults a part of our program, except for, yes, I know residents have said, but they're going to have their parents there. Yes, we're going to have their parents there to see them put out a program. But they will not be taking classes with us. They will not be there very often at all, which I would love for them to be there more often, because they're good people. Most of it is single moms. So as I think about that, I think about, why are we so, only Montgomery people can come into a Montgomery building? Because that's not how we work. In Aurora, people come from all over to use Splash Country and Phillips Park. I'm sure there's many people that come from Montgomery using both of them. The Phillips Park Aquatic Center, I, it's on Montgomery Road, it's right on the crazy, different, all the different city limits that everybody doesn't know what is where, just like the Aurora Police were up there. They will come to, across the street to where many of our kids come, from Southwind and Harbor Village. Two of the most difficult places where children grow up, we serve. I have 17 children coming from there this summer to St. Olaf, which I do very frequently. I, I mean, every, from our after-school program to our summer camp, to our baseball league. And these kids, when we talk about busing children in, most of the children are from very close. The reason why we bus them in is because of the very busy Douglas Road, which is not traffic caused by us, it's traffic that's there. And so we have our children get picked up at their homes and we bring them to us, and then we take them home. So, and the children that are coming to us, many of them are coming from Bardwell, Krug, Waldo, East High, which the area where St. Olaf is, is served by those schools, because it's School District 131. So as we think about, why are these people coming here? Why are they bringing people here? It's just like how everything works. We share in the city of Aurora, Oswego, Montgomery, West Aurora. In that area, we share our facilities and we serve people. And St. Olaf is a ministry. They are a church. And we are urban youth ministry. And we are partners, and we are serving the children, the children that are our future. I only pray that one of our kids will sit in one of your spots one day, because we give them so many opportunities, like you heard up there, and I can show you many more videos. But I also would love for you to visit us anytime. Our doors are wide open for you, and we open up next Tuesday. So I pray and ask any of you to please come and join us. Thank you for listening.
All right. So definition of a place of worship is an institution maintained by a religious body where people assemble for religious purposes, ceremonies, and other similar events. A place of worship may include housing for its members of religious order, daycare centers, preschools, or elementary, middle, or high schools. So as we interpreted this, and have we have interpreted in the past, that churches are allowed to operate daycares, preschools, or schools out of the church. They have been operating this after-school program, and the summer camps out of the church, even though it is sponsored by urban youth ministries. But this is not necessarily an institution and a standalone building by itself, operating as urban youth ministries, is not a place where people are assembling for religious purposes, ceremonies, and other similar events. So in that case, we didn't necessarily feel that it fit neatly into that definition, nor did it fit neatly into the definition for elementary, middle, or high school.
Can you explain, if it doesn't neatly fit into that, what, what could happen?
So we look at similar uses that could then-
My thought, if I was a petitioner, that if I don't fit neatly in their definition, that I open myself up to challenges, to my zoning approval, based that our code is gray on both of those definitions. That's what I would, as a petitioner, that's what I'd be worried about.
Excuse me. UIM is a division of Wayside Cross Ministries, but we are recognized by IRS as a church. So we are only one ministry that is Wayside Cross Ministry. UIM is a division of that, and we are, in that definition, we are a church.
I get you. Okay. I think we could, we could, we could sit here and place it under special uses for this, or amend your religious aspect of it. I honestly think it's probably very similar to both. I don't, I don't believe that it currently meets either of them, in my opinion, and thus, just approving it under any one of those would open us all to issues in the future. But-
So the question is, is which issue do you want to be open to in the future, potentially?
Well, I, I base, I'm basing it again on the conversation we had the last meeting, where the, the majority of the concern was the zoning of the property. And that's where I challenge the administration to not change it to, to a B1 and let this property remain R1. I just hope this is the, the cleanest version as possible, and that's why I ask if there's a question of a concern, if this tax amendment would hold up, again, if it were challenged legally. That was my only question. Won't change my, my vote. I just want to vocalize that question and put that out there.
Thank you.
And it sounds like an IRS designation of a church would be a cleaner designation to go through.
I'm good.
Good? Okay.
Would you like a recommendation to accept the report from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the tax amendment?
Certainly.
So moved?
Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Zess.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries six zero. Thank you. The second item is H2125 Vacating Part of Elliott Avenue. This is a waiver of first reading. Any questions?
So we're just vacating this to the church, basically?
Vacating it to the current property owner. Yep.
Right, to the current property owner. So this has really no bearing on the next.
Correct. It doesn't grant them any rights. It just goes to the church.
Gotcha.
Yep. So moved?
Second. Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
No.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. And that carries five to one. Thank you. And then lastly is item I, ordinance 2133, granting the tax amendment special use and variances for the Wayside Cross Youth Activity Center. This is also waiver of first passage on the second. Just, I did want to make one comment before we vote on the final item here. In no way was any of this intended, the whole process here was not intended to be a referendum of Wayside and your commitment to the community and what you've done or what you haven't done. And it's, it's disheartening that it devolved into that. This is a zoning matter, as to whether the use that you intend to have on this property is fitting with the area. If you just look at that and don't look at who is going to be there, because we're not supposed to do that, strictly from zoning regulations, we're not really supposed to do that. You would see, and I keep drawing this for people, is a Venn diagram of uses in this area. You have school, park, church. And where that circle meets in the middle, you have exactly what the applicant is intending to do on the site. It is 100% in my mind, fitting and useful on this property, and is the highest and best use of this. The fact that we, we litigated their successes and failures over 95 years, where they helped over 8,000 men, women, and children in our community, I know that we're better than that. I know that people get, I know that change is tough, and I know that a change in the property that you've looked at for so many of years, it is, it is hard to manage. But there's no, I mean, if this was a referendum on them, then they would, in my mind, absolutely, you know, get my vote for approval on that. But this isn't even that. It's just a zoning matter. So I appreciate all of the public comments. Those are my own personal opinions and beliefs. And with that, if any of the board has any comments, otherwise I entertain a motion for approval.
I do one, and I agree with you 100%. If it's done perfectly as a school, not as a club, a lodge, or a hall. And I agree. It's, it's, but if it was just being brought forward as a, as a school, R1 zoning, I would not have a problem with it.
Motion to approve, ordinance 2133.
Second.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
No.
Trustee Spurling?
No.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries four two. On the last two, if I could vote, I would vote yes. And that carries. Thank you. All right. And you guys, I will not be offended if you adjourn, but you can stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. Move on to item J tonight. We have resolution 2025-014, authorizing mobile, mobile food vendor license for Primos Tacos at 1970 Caterpillar Drive. Sonya?
Yes, so Primos Tacos has submitted an application for a mobile food facility to locate at 1970 Caterpillar Drive, which is Ivy Hall. The property owner has granted them permission, provided they get their approvals. The resolution before you would add Primos Tacos to the list of authorized mobile food facility licenses, putting the total at six facilities within the village.
Grab, can you tell me where on the property they are planning to set up? I'm just, I'm looking at the overhead.
I believe they are loo- looking to locate over in the drive-through area, but I don't have it shown on here, so I can't say totally for certain.
It's a little, the, I think the truck's there.
Yeah, the far right corner, Teresa, like going-
Upper right in this picture?
Yeah, upper right of the picture, like towards the Walmart parking lot.
Yeah, closest to Walmart.
It's not in the drive-through lanes, it's on that outer lane.
Okay.
Outside curb.
So the, in the bank's special use or the overall PUD that would prohibit this? Sometimes Walmart's a little-
I don't believe so. So I have not heard anything that there's been an issue. Ivy Hall purchased the property, so they are the owners of the property. If there was anything within the lease that said that they could not do something like this. But typically, Walmart's requirements are that you can't have another Walmart-like use out there, and you can't use their parking lot. So those are the restrictions with Walmart that I am aware of.
Okay. So it's there now and operating now, without a permit?
I saw it there during one of the, like, they had a special event or something that they had, and they had one of those previously for another event. I, I had seen it when I drove past.
Was this truck someplace else in town, Primos Tacos, or?
They'd been in-
They used to be on Douglas Road, and then they left that location, and Gordito's Tacos went into that location. And then they purchased the property at Lafayette on Montgomery Road and operated there temporarily, and were looking at potentially doing a food court. Now they're looking at putting the, working with Ivy Hall and having a food truck at that location.
So this is the same guy at Lafayette Montgomery Road?
That's not operating there currently, yes.
Right. That, that left and left a lot of mess, and is now mowing it, and there's gravel, and he had said that he would, if he didn't do the food court, that he would restore it back to the way it was before he put all the gravel on the lot?
We're working with him on that, yes.
Yeah, I'm a no. The guy is, did not keep his word with the village. I, I'm upset about the whole process anyway, because that happened without him coming before the board. Staff just gave him a temporary operating permit for that location, and I was told, don't worry, we have it all worked out. But there was no bond, there was nothing. And I said, what happens if he decides he's just going to leave and he doesn't restoration the lot? He'll restoration the lot. Well, guess what? He's left, and there's gravel in the lot, and there's weeds growing in it, and I bet you he won't restoration that lot. So, no, he's not, he did not do what he said he was going to do within the village, so I'm going to be a no.
Good deal. Any other comments? Questions?
I, I think this falls into that larger picture that I brought up at our last meeting, of what we want this corridor to represent, what do we want, what we want it to look like, what kind of development we want there. And to take into consideration, we have Taco Madre close by, we have Rosati's close by, Burger King, some other potential uses coming in as well. So take into consideration that balance of food truck versus brick-built, standalone buildings and operators within the vicinity. So I wouldn't be in favor of a food truck in this area.
Okay. Having done this long enough now, I realize, these are, the taco truck locations are all temporary. It's not a, it's not a for everything. We've seen Primos in a few different areas of town. If a couple of tacos and a drink are going to put you out of business, then you need to make better tacos. So I really don't have an objection to it.
Looking for a motion to approve?
Any other comments?
Was there a second?
Did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Perfect. Is there a second? Otherwise, it will die for lack of a second, if you'd like that.
One second.
Perfect. Any other comments? Okay, call the roll.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska?
No.
Trustee Guyer?
No.
Trustee Spurling?
No.
Trustee Bowman?
No.
Trustee Youngerman?
And that, motion is denied, one to five. Thank you. All right. Item K tonight is resolution 2025-015, authorizing a mobile food facility license. This is at 2283 Cornell Avenue. Go ahead.
Yes, so Digby's is looking to operate at 2283 Cornell. The property owner has granted them permission, provided that they get their approvals. They are here to answer any questions that you have. We would need to amend the resolution, so this would bring the total to six instead of seven, since the previous one was denied, and we would remove Primos Tacos from the list. So if you do recommend approval, be with those slight changes.
Thank you. Okay. Welcome.
How you doing, sir?
Good.
Steven Rodriguez for Digby's Fast Food LLC. First and foremost, I would like to let him know that the land, landlord maintains the lawn perfectly and shovels, but we won't be there in the winter. We're, we're right there, located right across the street from the, well, the planned location, right across the street from the Gas and Wash on Orchard Road. So Orchard and Cornell. It's going to be right there in front of my- Road. So, Orchard and Cornell. It's gonna be right there in front of my son's tattoo shop, Malavita Tattoo, that's located at 2277 Cornell Ave. What I'm trying to do is cater to the Butterball employees, all the employees and owners of all the buildings inside the industrial area. I've also taken in consideration to try and have like slushies and candy, it's, you know, stuff like that, for the kids that I see trying to brave Orchard Road to get to the Gas and Wash. So, I was thinking about, you know, those type of items. I've made it, I made it really clear that I don't plan on selling tacos. My, my intentions do mostly Chicago-style, you know, Italian beef, hot dogs, hamburgers, those type of things. We are gonna do specials, you know. I was thinking about doing some kebab plates with maybe basmati, you know, Mediterranean, then one week Mexican chicken, roasted chickens or something like that. You know, to have specials once a week with something different, like add some international flavors to the menu once a week. But to have something basic, you know, as opposed to them crossing the street to go to get a roller dog or a microwave burger. And believe me, I, you know, there's a place for that too at 2:00 in the morning, you know. Other than that, I can't see where it would be conflicting with anything across the street. So, I don't see any reason why they would, you know, it would look like an eyesore or anything. I mean, we have our health department licenses, you can see in the application, and that's a big hurdle to jump through. So, I mean, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer them.
Thanks, Steven. Any questions?
You tap dance back from that roller dog thing, 'cause I have one in my basement. I have a sick affliction for roller dogs, and I have one in my basement.
Well, like I said, there's a time and a place for them, but, you know, it's probably when you left the club.
They gotta be on it for 20 minutes, or they're just not good enough.
I mean, I'll eat one, but I know what the consequences are, you know.
I, I'm actually excited about the, 'cause, you know, we don't have a, like a fast food, like burger-hot dog joint around anywhere. I've been killing fine.
And we're gonna do Euros too.
See, now you sold it.
Any other questions?
No, just a statement. My, my vote's gonna be the same as the last one. If you were present, you heard. It's nothing about that. I think the hot dogs and beef are a better option, actually. But, you know, I think we have to have a vision of this corridor, and I, and I don't think food trucks fall into what I consider that vision, or what, what I think the potential use for that property is. So, good luck on whatever the endeavors are, and if you were back serving all of those, all of those Butterball employees in something down off Rochester or further in Ockut off the main strip, no problem. But on Orchard Road, I just don't support it. But, but good luck.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Go ahead, Jamie.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
No.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
No.
And Trustee Youngerman.
No. I, I don't know how we can just vote down this other taco truck, and then all of a sudden, there's gotta be, I...
Well, I can tell you why. Because the last guy came in the village and then do what he said he was, he was gonna do. And he basically took a nice piece of property and threw some gravel down, and has a truck out there two or three times, decided it wasn't for him, and he left. I mean, it's partly his fault, and it's partly staff's fault, because it was approved without board action and without any protections. I would never approve that to have happened unless if we had a cash bond or some type of, some type of financial mechanism to ensure that if he did exactly what he has done, left that property with gravel and weeds on it, that we would've had the money to bring the property back to the way it was before he destroyed it. That's why I voted no on that one. I don't have a problem with food trucks in general. I do have a problem with some placements of food trucks. I don't have a problem with this one, because it's up in basically on Cornell and Rochester there, where there's a lot of industry, and there's, everything is developed there. There may be something across the street sometime, but it's a one-way right there, other than the turn in and out of Cornell. I, I don't have a problem with the location whatsoever.
Yeah, I actually like the location of this one. Instead of it being in the Douglas Road corridor, I finally get to vote yes for one of them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, I will vote yes, and the motion carries 4 to 3. So, you can proceed.
All right. Thank you. What do I do from here, then? Do I wait for something in the mail?
Sonya.
Red and pink. Do you see that lady?
Tony will be in contact with you for next steps.
Well, thank you, thank you all.
All right to you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. The last item for separate action tonight, we have...
I'm sorry, I, I, hold on a second. I have a question regarding the outstanding licenses that have not been renewed. Where are those located?
I believe it is Tamale's Plus and La Habida that have not renewed yet.
So, we're down to just two that have not renewed?
I believe so.
And they are located?
The one is right over here at the VFW, when she was there, and the other one is over at Webster and Lake Street, at the KWCC.
Are they still operating?
I have not seen either. Well, I do see the one truck, 'cause it is regularly parked over at KWCC, 'cause I think they, they lease space over there. But I have not seen her operate out of there yet this season, at least on weekdays. So, I don't think she's operating the food truck at the location.
Yeah, because I don't wanna see them operating if they haven't renewed. They shouldn't be.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right. I'll move on to item L, accepting an easement on Lot C of the Foxmore subdivision.
Thank you, President Brawley. So, it came to the village's attention that the transfer of the property listed as Lot C did not take place with the county. So, we reached out to Canlin School District 302 to negotiate that transfer, and in the process, we decided it would be best interest of both parties to have an easement over the area identified in the packet that basically consists of the playground for the Foxmore subdivision as well as the memorial that was put in by the village. So, that is the process that is being requested tonight, is for the approval of the easement. After the easement is recorded, then the transfer of the parcel will be transferred over to Canlin School District, as the village staff has been working with them, and they are amenable to that, as identified in the original IGA that the village voted on in 2004. Any questions from the board? I'm happy to answer them.
So moved. Second.
All right, Jamie.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Brzaska.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Barbara Westy-Bell.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
That carries 6-0. Thank you. All right, we don't have anything for discussion under newer, unfinished tonight. I would like to bring up and recognize our finance director, who this is her last meeting with us, is moving on to other opportunities. I personally, sincerely have appreciated working with you. I know since you, since you were hired, there were lots of other special projects that ended up on your plate, like a $100 million WIFI loan, or whatever the amount is, that you've tackled with tenacity, with a smile on your face. I've always, I've appreciated working with you, and I wish you the best.
Can we make a motion to make her stay?
Yeah.
Anything else?
I've got a motion for Jennifer Maluski Day in Montgomery.
Nice.
Well, you have to, you have to be an employee, though.
I just wanna say thank you to everyone here. It's been great. Building the role as finance director. It's an amazing team. It's an amazing board, and Montgomery will always have a special place in my heart. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything?
I have a couple.
Go ahead, Ben.
June 7th Historic Preservation Walk. It's right here at 10 o'clock at Village Hall. Everybody's meeting in front. It's free. It's a history walk, and it's very informative. So, if anybody can attend that, that'd be great. The June 11th purification meeting will be canceled, because on June 18th, the purification committee will be doing their floral judging. And if anybody wants to volunteer to be a judge...
When?
Just call me.
During, um?
June 18th. All right, 30.
Thank you.
Public Works.
Let me see what I got going on.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The two plant people. Steve and Teresa. You're the plant people.
Okay, any other?
I do, yeah, a few. So, I, I did have a couple of residents voicing concerns. One was the vacant lot on the corner of River Street and Harrison. I guess it's not been mowed since the house was torn down and it was restoration. It's, I wouldn't doubt if things aren't living in it. That's the house that we condemned and sold down, tore down and sold. And then out on the west side, Evergreens on Concord and Deer Point, along the fence line. A resident said to me that appeared that somebody started to attempt to take the Evergreens down. They chopped all the green off of them, and all that's left now is just the trunks of the Evergreens, and there's weeds growing up through them, and they look like heck. I don't know, I don't know whose property that is, but if we can get that addressed, if it's village property or homeowner's property. The road resurfacing out west, has, has that been completed?
Yes, they finished the last street on Thursday, paving the last street. There is still striping that needs to be done. There are signs that need to be replaced, curb sealing, and sod that needs to be done. Some of the sod is in, but we were going to wait for the remaining sod until the fall due to the weather.
Right. I'd just like to say, I, you know, I live out there, and those guys were phenomenal. I mean, they just, it's like every day I drove past, it's like, holy cow, they're this far along. They just moved right through that whole process. Very, very efficient. I was very impressed. And then the last thing is just to let everybody know, I know this was going on for a year, year and a half. I'd like to thank any staff that was involved, but the basins in Blackberry Crossing West were finally, after the last document was signed by the HOA, they have been turned over to the village. So, those are now village basins. And that's all I have.
I have a question. Why are we waiting to do sod when it's May 27th?
So, I mean, a couple of reasons. Number one, you know, we have not gotten much rain. So, obviously, the sod that's been down is suffering at this point. That's obviously on the contractor as well to do the watering. We felt, though, as in years past, we've had better performance out of the sod when waiting till the fall. We're approaching June, July, which are gonna be our hotter timeframes of the year. You know, they're calling for 82-degree weather next week, so we just thought it was a better measure. We've done this in the past where we've waited till the fall. We've installed temporary seed, which is in the spec of the contract, and then come back and have the contractor replace it. But again, we're open to different ideas, but we're really just trying to get the best outcome overall for the residents.
Are, are there watering requirements in the contract for the contractor to put the sod down?
Yeah, so the contractors required perspact to water 10 times within the first 30 days. Anything above and beyond that, we would be charged for at $100 per 1,000 gallons. And based on them watering every other day for the next two months, it would cost an estimated $25,000 to have the contract water.
Why, every contract I sign, I get into where we have to have certain maintenance requirements. And if the sod isn't knitted in and it doesn't look good, it doesn't go get final acceptance.
Same case here. I mean, after 30 days, if the sod's growing, we could accept it. But the concern that we would have is then if the homeowner's no longer water it after that 30 days' acceptance period, and the sod becomes brown in the fall, who would be responsible to fix it?
Okay, we're worried about warm temperatures, but we're talking about doing sod now in September. Is it not hot in September? It's usually hotter in September than it is May 27th.
After we get the 30 days of watering that's included in the contract, then it's in October, and we don't have to deal with the cool weathers. And we've had much better success than we've had in the fall or in the spring.
And in my contract, it says it, it will be watered until it's, until it's accepted.
Which they can do, but we're gonna have to pay for it.
No, there is no additional water cost.
That, that's what this...
It's, it's, what is with the subpar stuff?
You're, you guys are arguing about two different things. Are yours roadway projects?
Huh?
Are yours roadway projects? 'Cause they could just be different.
Some of them, yes.
So, for a roadway project, that's how our contracts are set up. If we wanna change them, we can change them. But that's how we've probably been doing this here for a very long time.
Correct, and it follows the standard specs through IDOT that they follow, standard practices from them.
It seems ridiculous to me that we're not putting sod down in the end of May, because we're worried about heat, but we wanna put sod down in September, because we're not worried about heat.
Yes, that's exactly what he said.
But if it, he said, and he explained why.
And he explained why.
Just forget, forget the fact that I have 32 years of landscape construction experience, a horticulture degree, and I own a landscape construction company. Just forget that.
Well, again, your point was, you're arguing about heat now, and his point was, heat in September might be there, but in October, 30 days later, when we're accepting it, it's not 80 degrees in October.
I got married on October 6th, 2007. It was 92 degrees. So, it seems, why are we prolonging these projects? This seems like an issue with Public Works in prolonging projects. 'Cause my new and unfinished, my new and unfinished, hold on, I gotta talk. My new and unfinished item was we need an update on where we are with the lights. So, that's coming next.
Do you have, you raised your concern. Staff explained exactly what's in the contract, and their reasoning why doing it this way is actually more cost beneficial for the village. And I, I know you disagree with that, and you can't.
Then we need to redo our contracts, because they're not, it, it doesn't make sense to do it that way.
I mean, if the watering's included, then their price in the sod is gonna go up the same cost that it is to water it separately. I mean, I, I think you're paying for it one way or the other. You're either paying for it in supplemental watering, or you're paying it in the cost of the sod. There's a cost associated with having the contractor show up to water every day or every other day. You know, we're not charging them for the water, but there's still their manpower and their equipment to be out there to water.
Do it, do it the way you want. Apparently, my, my opinion doesn't matter. So, I've probably got the most landscape experience of anyone in the room, but apparently my opinion doesn't matter.
I mean, you can't change the contract. If you wanna suggest edits to the contract...
You can change the contract. You can write the contracts correctly the first time.
Right, but we're not gonna do that right now. We can't do that tonight.
No, God forbid we actually get it right.
Okay. Chris, Mark, I appreciate the way that you're doing this.
I do not.
It's saving us $25,000 this year. So, thank you. You said you had another item.
What's the update on the lights?
There's no update from the update that was provided on Friday.
A letter was sent.
When are we gonna have an update on the lights? I'm going to you now, because I'm not getting answers from the Public Works Director.
Demand letter was sent from our attorney.
I reviewed the contract and sent a demand letter. So, I've given them until June 30th, because it was sent in, I, I think that June 30th is a reasonable date, given the contract times. So, if there's nothing done by June 30th, then, and I've asked also for them to contact me. I can certainly follow up if we wanna take action on...
Is the demand letter for the full amount that we paid for the installation, for the furnish and installation of the lights?
It was sent.
Okay.
In, in the update. Okay. Doug, Ben, anything?
It, it's upsetting that it would take two years to get to this point.
We talked about that at last meeting.
Well, let's kick it around a little bit more.
And nobody disagreed with you. It's fine.
I have some items.
Sure, let's do it.
Thanks. Director, all for you, my friend. Actually, it's all street stuff. Okay. I think you call them a traffic horse. Is that correct? The light, the thing with the light on, what do you call them?
Traffic horse.
I've always called it a traffic...
Lighted barricades.
Yes, the barricades.
Lighted barricades.
Lighted barricades. There is one that has been on Lexington Drive near the sidewalk when they did the sidewalks. It's still there. It's been there for a couple weeks. Could we please have that picked up at some point soon? And then on Briar Cliff, there is some taped-off sidewalk from when they did the sidewalk work. Could we get all that taken down as well?
Yep.
Thank you. On Ockut Road, there is, there's black tire marks, and I don't know if that's coming from trucks, or if somebody was out there, you know, laying, laying the rubber down or what. Could we take a look at that? Because I wanna make sure if it's coming from the trucks... Because I wanna make sure if it's coming from the trucks, there's supposed to be like a cleanliness thing, right, when they come out of, and come out on the roads?
If I'm not mistaken, and check the location, I believe 110 Customs had an event last year that was a permanent thing, and that was, I think that's what that might be.
It is right by there, okay.
I remember when that occurred because they had asked permission.
Oh, to do burnouts on our road, no.
Correct. You know what, it happens at a lot of car shows, they do that a lot. So, but I think that that might be, I didn't see it, but I know that that happened.
Yeah, that's probably it, because, yeah, it kinda goes across, anyway.
Right there.
Okay, and last item? Hi, hi, are you listening? Are you writing my stuff down?
I'm sorry, yes.
Wow.
Well, because he's talking to Jennifer, that's why I'm asking.
Really kinda going good choices.
Are you writing my stuff down?
I mean, you talked during his whole presentation, so what's the difference?
Well, yeah. But I'm asking him a question.
I'm just gonna say, a spade is a spade.
He wasn't asking my, he wasn't asking you a question.
You called him out, and I turned it right back on you.
You bet I did.
You did the same thing to him.
Are you gonna tell me to shut up today?
Guys, I've got work I've gotta do after this meeting.
Number four, my fourth item. So Montgomery Road, west of, I think, yeah, west of Douglas Road. Compared to our roads, it doesn't look great. Can you please check with the county and find out when is that going to be resurfaced?
Yep.
Thank you.
West of Douglas, got it.
Yes, thank you. I'm done.
Ben, are you sure?
No, mine, mine has to do with Jen.
All right, perfect.
It was yay, 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 yay. So we received an email today with information asked to be provided by a board member, and we all received it, so thank you, thank you, thank you, it was very useful. So I appreciate that, so now you have to stay so you can do that for every meeting now, all the time.
Absolutely.
Perpetuity.
Yeah, perpetuity. But which, which leads me to another statement or two. One of those was a membership item. I didn't feel it was important to, to bring it up during the, the vote on consent or disrupt consent. I don't know that how appropriate it was to cover the GMACC membership for a business in town, especially one that has 10,000 employees and has received a lot of concessions from many, many taxing bodies in Kendall County. So I, even though we're looking out for the chamber, I think that's a bad precedent, and I would hope we wouldn't make a habit or do that again. That's not to you, that's just general. I mean, you're acknowledging, but that's not, that's not to you. And then second, as it relates to the chamber and making sure that we're supporting the chamber, there was another line item that had promo materials. And I'm not questioning the, the number or the dollar amount of the promo materials because it's marketing for the village, Public Works, PD, it's all necessary stuff. But we have a couple of vendors that are members of the, the chamber, and the company that received that was not a member of our chamber or located in Montgomery. So if we're going to make an effort to support the chamber financially in any way, I think that could also be best done by at least giving the chamber members first shot of at least a quote for stuff like that, so. But, but thanks for sending that information out, that was wonderful.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Anybody else?[1773.11]